Okay, I will call the September 29th special board meeting at 3:30 PM. We'll have to order. Roll call.
Chairman Beecham?
Here.
Robin?
Here.
Cav Alder?
Here.
Dickerman?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Approval of agenda. This special meeting is to interview for the general manager's position of Lowell Light and Power. Approval of agenda?
I approve the agenda as presented.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Open it up to public comment. Do we have any public? Mike Burns is here and he'll be part of it a little bit later. Do we have any public on the web?
I didn't see anybody downstairs in the conference room.
Okay, hearing none. We'll go start our interview process. Again, Kevin, thank you for coming.
Thank you for noting.
We have 26 questions that we're going to and then with follow-ups. And it's better than... My daughter works for NBL, which is National Renewable Energy Lab in Colorado. And she sent us 11 pages of potential questions to ask. So we've narrowed it down from 150 questions down to 26 with some follow-up.
Okay.
And some of them are... Steve and Anna have tailored them for us. They're the... We have... So obviously, this is going to be on YouTube. We started out with approximately 150 candidates. Narrowed that down. Narrowed it down to five candidates. Did some phone interviews with them. And we then have narrowed... Through that phone interview, narrowed it down to two people, you being one. We had an interview this morning and you're be in the afternoon. And so... And it's going to... Except, follow-up questions might be a little different because they're follow-up. But you're getting... So we're all on the same playing field, the same 26 questions as the previous candidate received. We're going to... As before, we're going to go through to about... Depending on the flow, to approximately question number 15 or so. And we'll take a five-minute break. I would... So whether it goes... You may go really quick, you may go... It's an important position, so we want to have... The board wants to have a full opportunity. And we want you to have... Feel comfortable and have a full opportunity to get as involved as you choose. With that, each one of us are... We've kind of just run around the table. And each one of us will be asking you questions. They might not be the questions that they particularly cited that they wanted to have. But we met, we put this together. And so that's kind of how the days, the afternoon's going to go.
Okay.
So question number one. Tell us about yourself and why you're interested in Lowell Light and Power and the Lowell community.
I'm from Michigan. So I grew up in Midland. Went to Michigan State, then worked in Detroit, Miami, back into Chicago, and then came back to Midland. Most of my background has been in finance, managing assets. There was an opportunity to participate in venture capital, startup companies. That was kind of attractive. It was something new. And then I made the move to Midland. Started working with that. Had my own consulting company. The consulting company was a good idea on paper. And then, when you're a consultant, you're working on a project. And then, you're not working on a project. And when you're working on a project, you can't really work on a... Filling a pipeline. So I was in the process of trying to find something that was a little bit more stable. And came across the Tribe, which had an opportunity in economic development as an analyst in a department that they were just forming. And ended up getting that slot. And I think it was the second or third day that I was there. The person that they had for energy buying and electricity, because the Tribe had just joined MISO at that point. They were in the process of engineering a substation to build as part of a casino and hotel expansion. And that person left. And I was... You know, I had traded relatively complex derivatives and all sorts of different cash flows. So I just said, "It's electricity. How hard can this be? I can jump in and do it." It is a lot harder than I thought it was going to be. I mean, I spent a lot of time over Christmas break because the person... The person, you know, kind of quit before they even started. So three weeks before they were starting, they left. Or they just formed the Tribe that they weren't going to join. So on Christmas break, I spent the majority of my time reading through MISO business process manuals, learning how everything works to some extent. And then, as we were building the substation and as we went through the ITC-METC interconnection agreements and then planning for capacity and then buying and selling, you know, both virtual and physical power and doing all of those things, you start to learn more and more and more. And that just kind of builds on itself. And as I was going... You know, as I was looking, you know, out and seeing different things, the opportunity, you know, showed up for Lowell Power and Light. And it's kind of something that's... It was attractive because it was able to coalesce a lot of what I had learned and added a lot more complexity to it. So we were... You know, you've got generation assets, you've got distribution assets, you've got, you know, all the retail customers. All of those different things kind of build onto what I, you know, essentially taught myself how to do because nobody knew really how to do that. And it allows, you know, to take something a little bit farther. Right now, the Tribe is... Has got a... It's a radial off of a METC line. It goes into a substation, goes into a utility corridor, and then goes into the casino and five or six different tribal buildings. To some extent, the use of, you know, the electricity landed in the economic development department because the theory was to use, you know, inexpensive electricity or the ability to undercut incumbent utilities as a driver for economic development. So we're essentially... We're trying to build out the process by which that happens. As with anything, it's a slow-moving process and there's a lot of things that go on. And, you know, this opportunity happened. It was like, oh, this is... You know, it's an established... It's an established utility that's, you know, potentially looking for similar kind of concepts. So I can bring a lot of what I've been able to do in theory and apply that towards, you know, helping increase the load. Because that's what any utility is looking at is, you know, how can you increase the load? How can you increase sales? How can you, you know, increase that footprint? And those are, you know, those are some of the things that made, you know, this particular position attractive.
Being from this... What do you... What do you know about the Lowell community, about Lowell Light and Power?
Lowell, I've been, you know, going through what was finding out on the website. You know, the... Going through both, you know, the website of Lowell Light and Power as well as MPPA. You know, just trying... Understanding. You know, municipal utility is similar to what we created at the Tribe as a tribal utility. So conceptually, the two operate very similar fashion. Lowell, I've known actually part of... The first time I've been to the city was I... Part of the startup companies that I worked with as a consultant was a temporary wall company. And they had a contract to use those temp walls and a lot of Myers that were around Michigan as they were converting the Chase Bank space over to Huntington Bank five or six years ago. So, you know, coming through here, we had a number of them, of the Myers that were between Ionia and Ada that we went through. And we just drove through and screamed, "It's like, this is pretty cool. I got a river running through the center of it." And then, you know, we had... My wife likes to come to Grand Rapids. So a lot of times, we'll go through, you know, a lot of these smaller little towns rather than just jumping on 127 and shooting across that 96. So it's kind of, you know, she likes to... She's very artistic and small-town feel, so she likes to go see all of these places. And, you know, we'd come here and stop to like the community.
You've touched on it a little bit, but tell us about your current job. Give us a brief summary of that job, outline your major duties, responsibilities, and what makes it complex.
I do a number of things. So my primary responsibility, as I'm trying to remember my actual job description, is everything to do with MISO. So day ahead, virtual trading, physical scheduling, e-tagging, meter data management, capacity planning. So every year, when you have to figure out, okay, we think we need this much capacity, participating in that auction. To some extent, the FTR market, but we really don't get into that because the load on the casino is so small. And the circuit that we're on really doesn't experience congestion. So there's no point... You know, the likelihood, you know, FTRs kind of cut both ways. If you have no congestion and you pay for it, you're paying money out to the person that takes the opposite side of that trade. So we just didn't really get involved within the FTR. And that's kind of a good general concept of what I'm doing, you know, for MISO, as well as working with commercial industrial tenants, trying to figure out new ways of bringing economic development or broadening the GDP for the Tribe away from gaming and entertainment and using, you know, using power to do that. And then, you know, the part of the economic development is, you know, I'll do a lot of the pro formas, I'll do a lot of the analysis, whether it's, you know, bitcoin mining, cannabis growing, data centers, you know, high, high, high-load customers, you know, ceramic manufacturers, you know, advanced alloys, you know, reaching out to all of those potential customers and, you know, trying to get them to relocate their activities or, you know, expand their businesses into the area that we can serve them power. That's a lot of what I do. The Tribe, you know, we have a blank sheet of paper at the Tribe. So everything that was done was created from scratch. So a lot of the, like, meter data management, you know, you're taking meter reads from however, whatever revenue meters you're looking at. You've got to take that data and wrap it into an XML format and send that up to MISO. Rather than spending $60,000 or $70,000 a year, $120,000 a year for the software to do that, I actually wrote the computer code that will take it from the SCADA database and put an XML wrapper and will send it to MISO to do it that way. So I've done a lot of the, you know, the computer coding and design. It's not perfect. I'm an economist. I'm not a computer scientist. But I just knew enough code from research that I can write it to make it work. And then if it grows, we can either, you know, overlay the more expensive ones we'd start generating revenue or hand it off to somebody else and say, "Actually, make this, you know, pretty and make it, you know, make it user." Because I wrote it. It's probably not really necessarily user-friendly just because I just do that every day when I pull the... When I pull the meter reads out. But, you know, that's kind of a broad level of what we... Of what I do, you know, across the board. Majority of it is, you know, on a day-to-day basis, is dealing with the meter reads and the power and the financial parts, settlement analysis, making sure that MISO has the right data and we're getting charged the right data, reconciling all those invoices that come through through the MISO marketplace. You know, that's kind of, you know, day over, day over, day. And then all sorts of other stuff that happens on an ad hoc basis.
Do you have... Do you... Do you, in your position, do you manage a number of other employees? Does... And I'm just going to listen. Do you have... Again, I'm not knowing exactly how involved the Tribe is with... Do they have line... I mean, are you subcontracting out? So are you building this substation that... Do you have... Does the Tribe have linemen? Do they have distribution? Do they, you know, those types of things?
Yes, it does. The setup's a little bit different in that the... What, you know, we kind of colloquially refer to as metering and money. So the metering and money is in economic development department. The physical assets are in the utility department. So there's a lineman that works there and then somebody else that has substation experience. I think they've got some... They worked a water treatment plant that... Or a water department that had its own substation. So this person is, you know, understands how they work. That's part of utilities. That's not any direct reports that I have. I do not... In this role, I have no direct reports. But in a previous... In a previous role as a senior portfolio manager, I managed the team of like 11 or 12 people. So I've had... I've had people that have, you know, I've had to manage and work with. But in this... In this role, no. It's just, you know, there's only two of us in the economic development department.
Got you.
And we do... We do, for the management of the distribution assets, we do... Are contracted with another electric company or electric construction company just because we didn't want to spend $150,000, $175,000 for a bunch of equipment that we're going to use once every 10 years. So they're just kind of on standby. If something goes horribly wrong, they swoop in. I think... I think we negotiated two-and-a-half, three-hour lead time that they have to be there onsite. The distribution assets aren't that complicated. But the one thing that makes it a little bit different is they're underground. So they're... It's an underground utility corridor that's about 150 yards away from Saginaw Bay. So it's flooded all the time. So anytime they have to do maintenance, they got to pump all that down, get into the distribution wires, get into those vaults. So there's, you know, there's enclosed space issues. There's all sorts of safety things that go when you, you know, when you mix the 13A kilovol distribution lines plus water plus underground. There's a lot of things that, you know, we got to pay attention to. But, you know, for the most part, that's handled by another company that we went through and we vetted and, you know, made sure that they knew what they were doing.
Okay. Okay, I've got a couple for you. Describe a work-related problem or situation that was very frustrating for you. You know, what made it frustrating and how did you handle it?
I think the biggest frustration has been part of the substation build. So there were a lot of people that were involved with the substation. There was a lot of different moving parts. And it seemed like, you know, when we were... When we were talking to the engineers on the job, that we would ask a question, you know, the SCADA system was a perfect example. You know, is there... You know, there's a SCADA system, correct? Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a SCADA system. And then when we went to try to talk about, well, what is the... You know, what's the software? What's the data? They're like, well, no, there's a SCADA system in that the meters that we selected can connect to a SCADA system. So there was a lot of, you know, change orders and things that happened where, you know, you get different stories coming from different places and you're trying to plan and manage this because this is, you know, the things that are attached to this substation are critical to run. The Tribe can't generate any revenue other than what it gets from its gaming operations. It doesn't really have the power to tax. It doesn't have the power to collect revenues from other places. So making sure that the casino is on all the time is a really, really important thing. And, you know, this build, we're going... We're operating without a safety net. So we're going from an incumbent utility that has, you know, years of managing and distribution, all of those assets, all of those redundancies, all of those reliability things that are in place. We're going from that, we're basically cutting that line, and now we have to operate all of our equipment and all of our different things, or all of our things to make sure that that stays up and running. You know, there can be outages and things like that. There is emergency generation. But long-term outages of distribution assets are unacceptable. So, you know, making sure that all of those cats were herded and all of those... All of those questions were answered. And then we made sure that we had all of those things in place. Sometimes that got a little frustrating just because it's a build. I mean, you know, things are always going to go wrong. But it's when you... I mean, when you freak out and panic and everybody just goes bananas, I mean, that doesn't solve anything. So a lot of it was, you know, making sure of like, okay, going back and, you know, double, triple-checking and then, you know, saying, okay, you really... This is what you need. And then wording it differently because people hear different words, different ways, and they answer a question, you know, sometimes maybe they're half-listening or they're... Everybody's doing a lot. This was a big build. There were a number of things that kind of went wrong that got delayed. You know, the substation had some equipment issues on delivery, you know, standard fare. You know, you get three voltage regulators and if one of them has a broken part, you can't really do anything until the third one comes. But if you're stacking the hotel build on top of that, you got to figure out, okay, how do we get this done without delaying the hotel because they need the power? Because the elevators won't go in without permanent power. So there's all... There's a lot of those things that were going on. So it was a little chaotic, but it was... There was something that, you know, for the most part, we worked, you know, as a team. I'm sure there was, you know, times where things were, you know, a little contentious and people get, you know... People had anxiety. And, you know, there's a lot of pressure on it. So it wasn't all, you know, rainbows and unicorn. But in the end, you know, everybody moved through all of that. We had the substation built. You know, we had the distribution corridor energized, we're serving load, connecting all the other buildings. And nobody... There wasn't even a portable incident in that whole thing. So, you know, not only did nobody get hurt, nobody died, you know, where no equipment was damaged and we ended up, you know, making the... Making the project happen.
Great, thank you. Okay, tell us about a time you anticipated future needs and took action. And how were you able to do that? I guess it's probably the project.
Yeah, I think one of the things... One of the things for, you know, for kind of seeing something that was happening is that the substation... I'm trying to remember what CEII information, what I can... I'm trying to, you know, weave that line and make sure that I'm not crossing over that. But there was some critical points of failure of the... Of the design of the substation, the distribution. So when we were looking at those, trying to figure out, okay, where do these things... Where's the highest risk component failure going to happen? So the way that it was engineered, I think what kind of happened, and it started a little bit before I was engaged in the project, but I think there was kind of a concept of building an additional part under the substation and then having some level of redundancy. And then that's not built at this point in time. But nobody really addressed the, you know, kind of that open risks period. So until other components are added or, you know, even almost like a second circuit or second source, you know, you're kind of... You're operating without a safety net. You know, so if there's a component that fails that's critical, then the whole thing's going to go dark. So what we... What we... You know, I kind of looked at it and identified it. And I was kind of surprised I was the one that, you know, kind of pointed it out. But we took that and then went through and said, okay, how can we... How can we kind of mitigate this risk? And we're still kind of in that process of trying to figure out. So there's a way of, you know, working with an incumbent utility and having a standby power, you know, so, you know, creating that tariff language. I don't think it exists as needed. So we're looking at the possibility of creating tariff language for standby power for a wholesale user, you know, with potentially, you know, retail distribution. So that's kind of a whole MPSC FERC, you know, Gordian knot, if you will. The other... The other concept that we came up with is using more of a microgrid. So we're looking at solar, stored energy, and maybe a simple cycle turbine that would cover both the load of the casino plus maybe the next five years forward of potential load growth. And what that'll do is it'll allow us to not have to pay MISO capacity rates at Cullen. You know, it's 267 bucks a megawatt day or whatever it happens to be. But we won't have to do because we'll have a generation onsite. So we'll have some of the solar, being able to generate, we'll have the combined cycle that can do a little bit more baseline. And then that and the stored energy we can use to, you know, help monetize that. So rather than competing just selling energy, you know, from fossil fuel generation, we'll be able to, you know, keep that battery charged and that opens up Blackstar capability, that will move up, ancillary services, stored energy, you know, being able to have your set points on your depth of charge or rate of charge. So you can unlock different potential revenue streams within the marketplace. It... Nobody's really doing it now because MISO hasn't really set that all up. You know, they're getting closer and closer and closer. So we've been kind of just, you know, building it small, thinking of, you know, what's the smallest footprint we can build? Because you can always build it later. It's, you know, the people that are running into this space and, you know, we're going to have a 300-megawatt hour battery and it's never been proven before. And they're throwing hundreds of millions of dollars at this stuff. You know, seemed a little risky given the fact the market isn't even established. So we don't even know what pricing signals are. So we kept it more in the, you know, what's the minimum we need to keep the casino lit, the hotel on, the other tribal facilities? And then probably three or four megawatts of, you know, new customers coming on board, whether we attract a data center or whether we're, you know, some other company. So we wanted a little bit of headroom that was in there. And then all three of those things kind of combined. So you're not... You're not beholden to a single kind of point of failure, if you will.
Okay.
My question is, how do you make important decisions or give me a reset?
How do I personally make important decisions or how does the process of which I work make important decisions?
How do you personally make important decisions?
Personally make important decisions? I just roll the dice and hope for the best. No, I don't.
As long as you're working at the casino.
I think a lot of times when you're making, you know, a really important decision, I mean, there's always going to be some level of uncertainty. So what I tend to do is gather as much information as I can to where you can feel comfortable with identifying the risks and then just kind of figure out what that risk surface is. And then, you know, the negative sides of that because nobody's, you know... What I tell my kids is nobody's ever gotten fired for being successful. So if you, you know, if it's a success, it's going to work itself out. If it's a failure, you got to figure out where kind of that ring fence of damage is going to be and how to watch something and make sure that it doesn't get too far away from you. So I think that's kind of, you know, how I make personal decisions. A lot of that stems from, you know, just being experienced on the trading floor. You know, when you're building a portfolio, you're putting together assets or, you know, even... Even in this job, you know, we're doing things that, you know, we don't really know the outcome. You just kind of gather as much information as you have and then say, okay, here's kind of the probabilities of success. You know, terrible, medium, good, you know, work those out. And if you're comfortable with that kind of, you know, that kind of span of outcomes, then you can pull the trigger and make the decision. Or, you know, if you're not, then keep, you know, either... Either review your analysis numbers to make sure that they're actually correct if something, you know, seems intuitive but it's not. Or, you know, try to modify either the project or whatever you're trying to do to make it to where you're comfortable in that particular space. And then sometimes, it's just saying no. It's just the ability to say, no, this... I do not see a way that this will work. And I've done that a number of times, you know, to have that... Have that ability to just, you know, say no. I know a lot of people get into trouble because they always want to say yes or they just want to... They fall in love with their own ideas. And that's the worst thing you can do is you've got to be able to have that objectiveness to be able to say, you know, it seemed like a good idea on paper, but it's just not... It just can't go forward. As opposed to, it seemed like a good idea on paper, we forced it, and now we're, you know, losing all this money.
My next question is, describe a time where you were able to see the big picture and confronted with lots of other details. How were you able to pull it all together?
Might be a good example is just, you know, how we... How I've worked within economic development to, you know, kind of look at the electricity market. Because when I was originally tasked with this job, it was basically, you know, buy wholesale electricity to save money for the casino so the casino is more profitable. But when you looked at the whole picture, it's like, well, there's way more you can do with this. It's, you know, there's all sorts of things. It's, you know, there's all sorts of things that can happen in the space as opposed to just saving money as an expense, you know? And then, you know, having that, you know, working through all the different permutations and coming up with that and then, you know, using that to educate tribal council and then working with accounting and legal and, you know, all the utilities and all the other departments and all the other pieces that move into place. Um, you know, a tribe is a very political, is a very political entity. There are 12 council members, or at least at this tribe, there are 12 council members and they are up for reelection every two years. So all 12 of them could get broomed off or they could have 12 new. So you're dealing with, um, you know, giving that governing body the confidence and the ability to, you know, make decisions with a limited amount of information, with a limited amount of knowledge. I'm sure I really bore them when I do my updates and I'm talking about, well, the MISO capacity auction is coming up, we need to figure out this and this and this and this and these are the things we need to do and these are the things that, you know, as a, as a governing body, you have to make a decision on and kind of what direction you wanna go. Um, but it's, you know, it's, it's, it's part of the, it's part of the process of, of putting that all together. And that's, I think, just being able to see all of the, all of the possibilities of the electric market and then being able to distill that and articulate that vision to tribal council, I think that's probably, you know, one of the, you know, more recent things I've been able to do, because everyone else was just, you know, looking closer to the trees as opposed to, you know, oh, there's all of this opportunity, you know, it's gonna take years to, to start harvesting all of this, but, you know, it's there. It's, it's, it's an ability to, it's just, you know, we kind of need, you know, a long-term energy strategy. So I had to come up with, you know, long-term energy strategy, you know, all of those things that you normally would have, that didn't exist. So we had to put all of that together, which was, which was a good learning experience. I mean, it was great to do all of this because now you're, rather than taking just, you know, some template, you're putting it together and you're, you're trying to articulate that and then people will look at you with a blank face and like, okay, well, how do we, how do we, how do we frame the message a little bit differently so people can understand? Cause this is, this is complicated stuff. I mean, it's, it's not, it, it, everybody likes the fact that you, you turn on a switch and the light comes on and it's, you know, that has that sort of auto magical appeal to it. But in the end, for that event to happen, there's a whole bunch of other things and a lot of complicated engineering and math that goes into this. And that's, you know, sometimes that's, um, that's not easy, necessarily easy to, um, to transmit that to, you know, people that have no engineering background, have no electricity background, no construction background, have no, you know, any background in business even, you know, cause there's lots of people that, you know, on, on council that are, you know, part of the cultural side, part of the environmental side, that don't have exposure to the heavy engineering side. So be able to communicate with them and to express that vision is, you know, is, is not necessarily challenging. You've just gotta pay attention and, you know, put forth the effort.
I'm sure it is. You know, I don't, I don't, I'm an engineering background, so I, you know, I'd get Steve explaining to me in layman's terms or the other gentleman, wait a minute, this is, this is how this goes, blah, blah, blah. So, um, definitely, I, I appreciate that because, um, that is very important to be able to relay that message of the directions that we need to go to make it simpler so that our audience can hear too and understand.
Right. Yeah, and then also, you know, just be transparent on the risks, you know, just not try to, you know, we really wanna do, you know, I really wanna do a battery system, because I think that's a, that's the future of the, of the electrical space, but there's lots of times where you look at it and it's like, eh, economics aren't really great at this point in time. You know, we could probably carve an argument to just get it approved, but then that's, it's just gonna blow up in your face. There's gonna be a complete colossal disaster. And having that, you know, that transparency of, you know, just, you know, and then just starting the conversation of just, we're looking at this, we think this is the future because this is the path, this is the kind of the most likely path as the, as the energy markets advance and mature and things get more distributed and spread out, that it makes sense logically that this would happen, but, you know, at, at a particular moment in time, does it really work? Or does it really work for, you know, for these type of economics or even identifying how it would work and working backwards and just waiting for certain events to happen where you can say, all right, it may be getting closer, let's, let's dust this off and, you know, update the, uh, kind of update the strategy or tactical plan, if you will.
Among our core values are trust, honesty and respect. Can you describe, describe a situation where you had to deal with others, whether it be employees or contractors or other stakeholders, you did not share those core values, and how did you handle the interactions with those people?
Trying to think of an issue where that was necessarily, you know, a problem, quite honestly. I mean, a lot of the times, just thinking back is, is doing, doing a lot of due diligence with the vendors of just, you know, reputation and, you know, um, working on projects, I tend not to be the lowest bidder kind of, you know, okay, you get the lowest bid, we're gonna hit the bid. It's more of, you know, what's a reputation of an entity? You know, so I haven't really, um, I'm trying to think of, you know, anything that I've run across that, that was really, you know, more nefarious where you had to kind of make that call. Um, and honestly, I don't have anything really specific like that. I know there's been, um, you know, there's probably always issues with, you know, expense accounts and, you know, is it really a legitimate expense versus, you know, something along those lines? And those are relatively easy to find and as, you know, I've, I've had to, I've had to, you know, go through people's expense accounts, you know, as a, as a senior portfolio manager, you're kind of, you know, in charge of all of that and just thinking about, no, this is not, you're not getting this. So, but it's not, it's not necessarily, you know, something that we're, you know, there's a big integrity, you know, somebody's asking for, you know, sacks of unmarked, unsequential twenties, you know, because, you know, we'll give you this if you award us this bid. I don't, I've, I've never run into that. I'm, I'm sure it happens. There's plenty of people that get indicted over here and, and stuff like that, but I've just never, I, I've never dealt with, I've never dealt with people that were necessarily like that. I mean, I've had, um, I've had, you know, the conflicts between, uh, between employees. Um, there's one that was, uh, not really necessarily sexual harassment, but, you know, one employee made another employee feel uncomfortable in some fashion, so, um, I had to deal with that. Um, those really are no fun at all because, you know, nobody's really a winner. Um, but it's, it's something you've just gotta deal with. Um, you know, a lot of times a good HR policy and making sure those things, you know, are in place really help that because you're not, you know, you're not trying to think on the fly, how do you deal with these really sensitive situations? Um, and a lot of it is just, is management setting the tone. I mean, you know, on the trading desk, we're always, you know, we're in charge of like, you know, we're gonna do trades, we're gonna do, you know, things ethically and, you know, that's just kind of the tone of, of setting that. Um, you know, I think when management plays fast and loose, employees catch on to that and then they, you know, they think, oh, they're getting away with it. I can kind of cheat a little bit and get away with it on that side, but, uh, for the most part, I really haven't had anything, you know, that was a major issue that I've had to deal with, luckily. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing. I was just, uh, I was trying to think of, you know, try to find a concrete example that makes it, you know, that kind of makes sense for it.
Okay. Uh, you know, here we're a team-oriented organization. What techniques do you use as a leader of multiple departments, uh, you know, you know, in your, in your space, we were dealing with multiple departments, their competing priority of priorities? Um, you know, how do you balance, how do you balance the departmental priorities against the overall vision of the entire team and the entire project? You know, how, how do you?
How do you deal with the interpersonal?
How do you manage those and how do you, how do you empower your, the staff of the departments for success?
Right. Yeah, I think that's, again, it comes back from, you know, from the tone management sets. So when you have, when you have, you know, a key strategy, even though you may tweak it on the margins, you know, cause a strategy is kind of the bigger, the bigger piece and then tactically, you're, you know, how do you execute on getting that strategy? So if that's, if, if that's communicated to everybody and everybody kind of knows where you're trying to go and then acknowledging that there's, that there's competing conflict, you know, just say, okay, you're gonna have a problem with this department because you guys are gonna fight over, you know, this widget, you know, however that works. It's just identifying a lot of those to those particular department heads or those managers that are gonna be there, so they know that you know that there's gonna be a conflict and that you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to all deal with that and manage through that. And sometimes it's just, you know, sometimes it works and sometimes, you know, people behave like five-year-olds in a sandbox and you just kind of have to, people say, no, this, you know, Jimmy's gonna play with this toy for a while and you'll get it later, so, you know, stop crying about it. Um, you know, you don't really wanna do that as often if you want, you wanna keep everybody moving and keep the, regardless of the friction, kind of keep everybody going, you know, forward. Um, a great way I've found, and I don't know if it was necessarily by, by advanced thought or just happens to work out, but when you're getting those incremental successes, you know, I just, I was just always annoyed when I had managers that, you know, you do all of this work and then they would just take credit and stand up for it. But a lot of times it was, you know, I found that when you're trying to, you know, move through something particularly if it's fast-moving or complicated, you know, making sure that the people that, you know, that helped make those, met those milestones or, or, you know, really hit the metrics that they needed to, that they were, they were the ones that were celebrated. So management just kind of steps back, elevates those other people, cause then, once, you know, in front of, once people do that, then they're empowered to continue to make those good decisions and continue to grow and just take ownership of that, cause that's really what you want. I mean, rather than delegating and forcing people to do something, you know, you really, you know, buy in and allowing people to grow into roles and, you know, pull more responsibility to where they want to, that makes the organization function at a much higher level and it also, I mean, it, you know, it decreases absenteeism, increases, you know, increases production, reduces turnover, all of those different things. And that's something that's, that's relatively simple for management to execute on, is just, you know, making sure that everybody shares in the credit where credit is, you know, kind of due and not be like, oh, I, I did all of these things when, you know, all of the stuff that happened was from somebody else. And I think that's, you know, kind of one of those, you know, philosophies that I don't know if you necessarily grow into or you created, but I just found that that really works, that it's, it's so much easier to, to work with these things. And then when you get conflicts, it's, you know, people aren't fighting for fiefdoms and silos, they're, you know, there's a lot more cross-functional things that can happen when people know that they're not being pitted against each other by management. If that made sense. It's kind of long and rambling on.
Follow-up question with that. Um, have any of your other positions earned, have you, um, worked with unions? I, I, again, I don't know if the tribe is...
Not do, not really directly. Um, through some of the, with the, with the startups that I worked with, we worked in union, you know, we worked in, on some union jobs as merit, as a merit shop. Um, and I've done a lot of consulting with local construction companies, um, you know, for strategic reviews, you know, helping them grow their business as well. And one of the issues, you know, that people have is with, you know, dealing with organized labor and, you know, those kind of labor markets. Um, it, it's never been a problem. Um, you know, it's, it's like anything else, it's just, you know, it's the structure of an organization and I've never, I, I'm trying to think of, you know, really close where, you know, there's a unionized part of a workforce and I haven't directly overseen or, you know, done anything with that space.
And we are, our linemen, our distribution, our, um, our union employees and our offices not. Um, with that, I give some follow-up things, but I'm just, um, your style, how much, um, are things written in stone? And what I mean by that is, um, are there, what's your style like? And I, and I'm gonna give you one example that we, over the years have done here. Occasionally, um, an example, it's Thanksgiving weekend, um, we don't have, bills aren't due on the Wednesday, there's not a lot of things going on, um, between the board and our general manager, we, the general manager comes and says, you know, I'd like to, I wanna send our employees home at three o'clock this afternoon, it's the start of the holiday, um, they can get their holiday started if they're traveling or if they're making deals or whatever. Again, that's not going, um, doesn't say anything in the union about that or whatever, but, you know, my question is, how flexible are you in, in a role as the, as the general manager? Or is everything, here's rule number one, here's rule number two, here's rule number five?
Uh, I, I think it's, it's gonna depend on which rules you're, you're looking at in terms of, you know, the safety, no, I don't think there's really, there's not a lot of squishiness in safety, um, in terms of, you know, time in the office and, you know, letting people out earlier. Yeah, I mean, it's just, just something that builds morale, not, you know, nothing is really written in stone, I don't think. You always be flexible. I mean, you gotta adapt to, you gotta adapt to the circumstances and there's a lot of moving parts and, you know, there's a lot of emotions and people have different personalities and all those different things. Um, you know, certainly, you know, theft, fiscal responsibility, you know, safety, those type of things seem, you know, sacrosanct, so you're not gonna really, you're not gonna really play around with those, but other things, you know, shifting time, I've had, you know, one of the portfolio administrators was a single mom and her kid got sick at one or two or whatever it is. Just go and take care of your kid. I mean, there's, somebody else can cover you for a couple hours and, you know, next time, when somebody else needs it, you cover them and don't complain. And that's, you know, so that's kind of, you can't have to be human about this. You can't be, you know, just robotic and, you know, beat people with a stick just because a rule says it's gonna rule. But, um, but at the same time, you know, people turn out, taking advantage of it, then, you know, maybe you tighten down a little bit, but for the most part, you know, everybody's an adult. I mean, you know, unless you're hiring eight-year-olds and, you know, they're in a role, then people shouldn't need a lot of parental supervision, you know, unless they demonstrate that, okay, yeah, you, you're kind of a loose cannon, you need, you need supervision, but otherwise, you know, make it to where people wanna come in and wanna do, you know, wanna do the best they can and wanna contribute to the, the growth and the, um, the success of the organization.
Thank you. Follow-up on the union topic, how would you go about negotiating, you know, with the union, there's a sticking point and you can't see eye to eye with them? How would you overcome that, come to an agreement?
Well, I mean, if you, if you're, if you're kind of butting heads with, with, with another, you know, entity or organization, it's usually over one particular thing. So, you know, if you're, if you're not going over, there's usually, you know, one or two things that are there. So if you can, if you can kind of get an idea of, you know, whether or not that's, you know, that's something that's, that's steadfast or if it's, you know, we're trying to get something else and using this as a, you know, negotiating point because they have strength on this point, you know, but they're trying to get this over here, or maybe it's a weaker negotiation piece, um, you know, trying to, you know, trying to discern, figure that out if that's capable. Um, the other thing I'd probably do is just, is try to not, um, not distract, but just, okay, let's, you know, let's not focus on that because we're going nowhere fast, but making good time. focus on that because we're going nowhere fast but making good time. But let's, you know, look at some other, some other components of the agreement and then try to find some common ground there. And then maybe, you know, where the sticking point is after you've found some, some common ground, you can circle back to that. And maybe it's not so steadfast. Maybe you can, you know, you, you found that you've negotiated more than you thought on something else so you can give something back over here in order to get something over there. You know, just trying those different tactics of, you know, trying to figure out how to work around the larger head without, you know, smashing stuff on the tables and throwing chairs and yelling and, you know, doing all those. And I've, I've seen that negotiation tactic and I, I, it's not me. I don't think it's, I don't think that's necessarily, you know, advantageous to do that. I mean, within any deal, there's always got to be, you know, bits and pieces where, you know, you could give on one to get something on the other, you know, just prioritizing that, working with the team of saying, all right, here are the things that are under negotiation. What are the, you know, what's the highest priority? What's something that we really, really have to have? And then have, you know, secondary, tertiary, quaternary, you know, all of those different things. So, you can take that and just say, all right, we can trade some of this stuff away because it's not as important, but we really, really, really need to hit this. And usually, usually you can figure out a way through kind of that Byzantine phase. And sometimes you can't. I mean, and, you know, but at least, you know, trying to exhaust all potential avenues, um, you know, in getting there. I haven't really found too many, you know, even the most contentious negotiations, I haven't really found too many that just, that end up just completely stalemated, where you can't figure out at least some way of working or through. Thank you.
Okay. I got a couple of questions for you. Um, so one of our core values is to be innovative. Describe a situation in your previous job where you had to be innovative and explain the challenge you faced and the Solerski came up with, and how did that kind of all come work out?
Um, there's a lot. Trying to figure out what would be the best example. Um, really, I mean, every day is innovation. I mean, you're, you're, you're looking at it, you know, from, you know, the role that I'm in now, everything we're doing is innovating because, you know, for by and large, the tribes haven't done anything in the electrical space. And this tribe is the only federally recognized tribe that's part of MISO. I don't think there's, I think there's a couple of tribes that are part of KISO or thinking about joining it. There may be one or two in the Southwest Power Pool. Um, but that's mostly their utility and their, their initiating a, a PPA with some other generation source. So, everything we've done has been innovation and, you know, moving through all of the different pieces. You know, you've got to put this together. Now, you've got to get accounting to deal with it because accounting, you know, has certain frameworks that they have to report, the financials, and then their audited financials are part of, you know, quality audited financials are part of going to the capital markets to bring on debt. So, making sure all of those things are recorded and done, all new lines of business that nobody's ever done before. Everybody understands how the accounting construct works. Same thing with legal, you know, you want to make sure that the documents are there, um, that are written where none exist. I mean, if, you know, if you wanted, you know, vending machine contracts or contracts with Pepsi or Coke or, you know, contracts to buy chips and cards, they've been doing that for thirty years. There's a stack of contracts that have been doing that. For, you know, a contract on how to sell power to a non-triple agency or a non-triple entity on tribal trust land, they don't exist. So, we've had to, you know, create all of those things. And you're dealing with, you know, all of the internal politics, all of the internal departments, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, you know, the DOE lots of times. Um, you're getting grants and, you know, trying to piece the capital structure of this thing together. Um, and then, you know, just what is the business model? You know, we're creating businesses where none have existed before, at least in the, you know, at least kind of in the tribal space. So, pretty much everything is, is innovation and that's kind of the way we look at it. And, you know, we're just, you know, we look at, you know, what is the, what is the status quo? What are other people doing? And how can we compete in this space without, you know, by using the advantages that the, um, that the tribe has? Sovereign entity, it's a, effectively, it's a utility authority is, you know, by and large, the equivalent of a municipal electric cooperative or municipal, municipal electric company. Um, so you're doing those things. You're like, okay, how do these other places compete? Because the municipal, you know, you're, you serve power within that municipal region and you're not going outside of it. So, you're competing in that small, you know, that's relatively small geographic space compared to, you know, the entire bulk power system. And that's kind of where we're, you know, how we look at all of those things. What's the, you know, what's the highest, you know, highest value refining of cheap electrons essentially? We're buying at the wholesale market, we're delivering them to a point, you know, to our, our substation. Then from there, can we take those and, you know, how do we create value add that the tribe can capture? Um, you know, the data center is a great, a great example of that. Data centers are going to be local. There's room enough to have thousands of these all over the place. You know, that's, that's one thing that, you know, an innovative use of power and an ability for that entity to capture a significant amount of income. Because that markup on that power is going to be, you know, you're talking tens, twenties dollars a megawatt from where you can buy it on the wholesale space and still be under, you know, other data centers because they've got a markup, the incumbent electric power and those tariff rates. We're not beholden to MPSC tariff structure. So, we can, you know, compete in those seams. And that's, that's basically what I do all day, every day, is just find those seams where we compete in all of these different markets and use the tools that, use the tools that the tribe has, whether it's sovereignty, cheap electricity, you know, water, sewage, um, you know, gas, wholesale gas purchases, all those different things. How does all of the different parts come together where we can create a competitive advantage and capture, you know, capture that income under the demand curve for whatever service we're trying to provide?
Okay, cool. Thank you.
It was kind of a roundabout way of getting there. I was trying to think of like a specific example, but it's, you know, pretty much it's everything.
Yeah. Well, that's actually a good point. Um, so another core value question. So, two of our core values are environmentally and aesthetically aware. So, describe a project you've been involved with where you had to take into consideration both the aesthetics and the environmental responsibility of it. And how did this affect your planning?
Um, actually, it didn't affect the planning because we, we took those into account right from the start. Um, when we look at, you know, going back to the data center project and the substation, um, they're relatively close to the casino and the hotel. Um, part of the design is to do two things is we wanted to, you know, because we're going to use the substation to power the data center. So, you'd want to have, um, the SIP standard, which is Critical Infrastructure Protection, I think, is the standard. So, you know, you can do certain things that protect that infrastructure. And one of those is, you know, you know, putting a nice brick wall around a substation, which does nice. So, you've just got, you know, you got a couple of things sticking out over the top, but then you've got kind of a nice facade, you know, as people are driving by, um, going to the casino. So, we, we kind of put that in place. It hasn't been built yet just because, you know, we needed to build the substation first and then, you know, we got roads. It's a long story of why it happened. But then, taking that concept and, you know, looking at what the data center is going to look like. I mean, you don't want to just build, you know, a pole barn that looks terrible. Because A, you're, you're marketing, you know, contents of, you know, the tenants that are coming in. First appearances are really everything regardless of what every second-grade teacher says. So, it's, uh, you know, making sure that it looks, you know, it looks good, it looks, looks like it's secure, it looks like it'll be operational, all those different things. Um, you know, and making sure that it kind of blends in with the environment. Um, with, with anything, you know, you've got different environmental issues that you're going to have to work with. Um, where these projects are located is, is near Saginaw Bay, which is a watershed. It's, I'm, I didn't-